Board meeting for Thursday, June 30th, 2022. Time is now 7:01. First item on the agenda, Citizens Forum Call for Public Comment. Any public comment? Seeing none. Move on in A and R. Christopher Inan Colonero, 30306 Main Street. We have anyone presenting for the A and R?
My name's Chris Roslin. I'm the surveyor of record for the plan, I believe.
Name and address, please.
Yeah. Not my address, 99 South Main, Milford House. I don't know if there's any questions. I know this has been before you before once already, so.
Mr. Benoit, any questions or issues?
No, I did not have questions on this. This is a forming A and R. This is a transfer of backland from one property to another. It abuts it. The only comment I had at the time was to eliminate the common lot line between the two soon-to-be combined parcels, and I made that revision on the plan.
Okay. Board, any questions? I'll entertain a motion to endorse.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Marks.
Second.
Second by Mr. Greco. All those in favor?
Aye.
Roll call.
Yes, please.
Aaron Sokrat, aye.
Ernie Marks, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Swicker, aye.
Thanks, Les, and I.
Thank you very much. We'll get that time for you. Thank you for coming.
Yep.
Next item, public hearing, 7:00 p.m. Public hearing continued from June 23rd, 2022. Sutton Douglas Development, application for definitive subdivision from Verdon and 54th Street.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Members of the board.
Nice to see you in person.
Yeah. It's a new thing. It's a new thing. So I just wanted to, first of all, thank everybody here for the process. It was a good process. I think we, in the end, we got a new, a good project, as we discussed last week. So again, Wayne Belloc Land Design Collaborative. I'm here with Tim Flynn of Flynn Build and Develop. We, if I could, Madam Chair, just kind of give you guys an update as to where we are with everything else.
May I do that, sir? I apologize, Madam Chair. Last meeting, we actually voted to close the public hearing portion of this.
Oh.
Yep.
Okay.
So we are on to decision.
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Benoit. So we had, on Monday night, we received, we closed the public hearing and received an order of conditions with.
Okay, so what we're here tonight is to discuss any conditions with the decision before we have our final vote.
Yep.
So I don't want to have any new information.
Gotcha. But if I could admit for the public record, the covenant, if I could give this to Mr. Benoit. This is signed.
That's right.
Appreciate the comment. And so we're ready.
Okay.
Thank you.
Board, do we have any questions or concerns regarding the draft decision? Those circulated?
We reviewed it.
Okay.
Through the chair last meeting and everything. We hammered on everything that was supposed to be brought up. We stayed thought, and that's why we closed the public.
Okay, great.
Swap it out, the one that's in there.
We closed the public hearing because everything was finalized and hammered out. We're just waiting to hear from, was it Sutton and ComCom, I think was the two. And I'm assuming Sutton went through and ComCom went through. So that's why we're here tonight.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the definitive subdivision plan for Sutton Douglas Development.
I'll second. I'll so moved.
Motion made by Mr. Greco, seconded by, I mean, Mr. Swicker, seconded by Mr. Greco. Did you have a comment?
I had a comment. Just for the record, again, with the back, with the land donated back to the town. How are you going to, remember, we talked about we would like that at the beginning and, you know. Matt?
Great question.
Thank you.
Through the chair, the way we worded that decision was we had to kind of work that around town meeting schedule. So what we did was.
Condition, condition five, Matt?
There we go. Thank you. Special condition.
Number five.
Five anymore. They're cutting driveways, bond release.
Yeah, I got it.
Thank you. Open space. Read that shall be conveyed to the town of Douglas no later than December of 2023. All right, the deed recorded to Worcester Registry no later than March of 2024. That gives them two town meetings, presuming that we can't get it ahead of this fall. Gives them two town meetings in the year 2023 to get it done.
All right. I just want to make sure it's there in writing.
Yep.
Understood. Something a little bit housekeeping.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second on the table. Roll call, vote.
Aaron Sokrat, aye. Ernie Marks, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Swicker, aye.
Thanks, Les, and I.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Julie? Meg, if you.
Do I have to abstain?
Yeah. Because you weren't in all the meetings for.
Prior.
Okay. Apologies, abstain.
No worries.
Thank you.
That's okay.
We just have one copy of the covenant, the original. You go with that.
Yes. Yeah, that's to be recorded.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Members of the board.
Thank you.
Thank you, much appreciated.
Make us proud, please.
We will. We will. We will. Appreciate it. Thank you very much, folks.
Appreciate it.
Happy fourth. Same here, but the work of the guys.
Be notable of the neighbors. To catch you back.
Thank you, guys. Thank you, you guys, well safe and healthy.
Yeah.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda. 7:05 p.m. Public hearing continued from 6:23, 2022. McIntyre Loom Inc., application for earth removal permit and site plan review. Is that still an open hearing?
It is.
Okay. Welcome, name and address, please.
Good evening, Thomas McIntyre, the applicant.
Good evening, I'm Mike Dryden, Senior Project Manager, Allen Engineering.
Would you like to tell us?
Just very briefly, we were here a week ago, of course, and at that time, we were waiting to go before the commission. We did so, as you know, of course, and there were some minor comments. That the commission approved the project, and we addressed all the comments in our last correspondence. Two letters from McCarty Engineering, as well as two comments from DEP. And you should have that response letter in your packet, I believe. And we did receive another, a third letter from McCarty essentially saying that we have adequately addressed all the comments. So that's where we are at, at this point.
Board, any questions?
Nope.
Concerns? This is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience have any questions or concerns regarding this agenda item? Please raise your hand online. If not, yes, miss, name and address, please.
Yeah, Lynn Rhodes, 50 Conservation Drive. I was just wondering, I had some questions and some things to, you know, address our concern, still ongoing concern about 110 acres, and you didn't ask questions, so I was just wondering.
Okay, so.
What?
Sorry, through the chair. My apologies, but that was the last hearing item, and the public hearing was closed last week, last Thursday.
I wasn't aware of that.
We closed, they closed it. I was not in attendance, but.
Agreed.
They closed the hearing, and there was no, there would be no additional comments from the public. So we are on McIntyre Loom, application for earth removal permit.
All right. And because I couldn't come, could I just ask about what happened with Lot 22 with the walk through or no?
No, so that's at Conservation?
Yes.
Commission? So I would suggest to just call Steve this, and he'll go over it with you.
Okay, all right. Yeah, just so no one is blindsided, I just wanted to let you know that we have, we Preservation Park slash Conservation Drive have sent our concerns, our ongoing concerns, to Silthus Selectman and Ryan Fattman and Representative McKenna.
Okay.
Okay, just.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. So back to this hearing item for 7:05, McIntyre Loom, Inc. I'm not seeing or hearing any additional comments or concerns, so I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Swicker.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sokrat. All those in favor, roll call.
Aaron Sokrat, aye. Ernie Marks, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Swicker, aye.
Thanks, Les, and I.
Thank you very much. Would you like the motion separate for the approvals?
We'll be looking for three. We're looking for motions agreeing waivers and then individual special permit and site plan approval.
Could we just briefly go over the waivers requested? I don't have that in front of me.
Through the chair, the applicant went over the waivers that are less, meaning the board didn't voice any objections at the time, which is didn't vote on them formally at the time.
Okay.
But those waivers are numerous. A lot of, the bond requirement, section 6.1.6, number one. Excavation within 100 feet of existing public square adjacent property line. Excavation on intended proved building purpose, 6.6, number four. No excavation made less than 10 feet above animal high water table. Topsoil and subsoil stripped from operation, area shall be stockpiled. Active excavation operation shall be determined with a port of notice that shall exceed a total of 10 acres. Waiver of that. Tracking routes and methods.
Do you, does the applicant have this itemized in one letter as a request for waiver?
Yeah, it was part of the application, the initial application.
Is it on a plan?
It is not on the plan.
Granted, they will be on that.
Yeah, we could certainly put them on the plan. Happy to do that.
Do we have the sections listed?
Yeah. It's section 6.1.6, and then subsections 1, 3, 4, 6, 7, 9, 10, 11, 12. And then section 6.1.7.
In its entirety?
In its entirety, just a piece that reads, "The area of excavation be restored within four inches of lawn and grass seed."
And the difference being for a majority of these waivers is that we're talking about an ongoing operation, not just a short interval earth removal permit. This is a operation that's supposed to be permanent. Nature of the business.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to grant the waivers from section 6.1.6, subsection 1, 3, 4, 6, 7, 9, 10, 11, 12, as well as section 6.1.7. The area of excavation must be restored for lumen seeding.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Sokrat.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Marks. All those in favor?
Aaron Sokrat, aye. Ernie Marks, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Swicker, aye.
Thanks, Les, and I.
Thank you very much. I'll entertain a motion to grant the earth removal permit.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Sokrat.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Marks. All those in favor?
Madam Chair, we actually rendered this on one decision and combined both.
As well as a friendly amendment to include an approval for site plan review.
Accepted, so moved. Petition placed.
Second.
By Mr. Sokrat and seconded by Mr. Marks. All those in favor?
Aaron Sokrat, aye. Ernie Marks, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Swicker, aye.
Thanks, Les, and I.
Okay, we'll sign that tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your time.
Good luck on the move.
I know you've got work to do real quick.
Yes, yeah. It's underway.
Next item, 7:01 minute to go.
It's a request for continuance.
Next item, public hearing continued from June 23rd, 2022. Pine, sand, and stone, bedouin, sand, and gravel, application for earth removal permit, One Lucky Dam Road. We've received a request for continuance in our packet to the next planning board meeting.
July 28th.
28th? Oh, yeah. To July 28th at 7:00 p.m.
So moved.
Chicken on time.
Pine, sand. Motion made by Mr. Marks.
Either one, I made it.
Mr. Swicker, seconded by Mr. Marks. All those in favor?
Aaron Sokrat, aye. Ernie Marks, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Swicker, aye.
Thanks, Les, and I.
Thank you very much.
You know, I appreciate this. This is very, you know, with all the middle dates, everything.
Next item, not reasonably anticipated, 38 hours prior. We have a cease and desist order, and that order is requesting resolving the matter with the planning board at your earliest convenience. Does everyone have this in their packet?
Yep.
We also have a letter from Jeff, Attorney Jeffrey Efrin. Mr. Benoit, would you like to give us a little background on this?
Sure. So as you all know, this is a definitive subdivision that the board approved back in 2017. Sleepy Hollow, it's also on Joseph Road, currently under construction. Some concerns were raised by some abutters about filling, excuse me, earth removal, and we've been working with the applicant over the course of the last several months. Anyway, just to come to some sort of resolution as to how this should shake out. Now, once they're operating under building permits for earth removal to construct homes and such. So the question that we had when we, when the cease and desist order was issued was, is this going to alter or cause for change the approved stormwater system from the subdivision plan that was approved? So at this time, through the cease and desist, we've asked the developers to prove that there doesn't need to be any impact to the stormwater system, or if there is. So their engineer issued a letter to us that we sent to a consultant, and we haven't received a response yet back from our consultant. So we don't have answers today, but according, you know, to the cease and desist in the letter that we got from the attorney yesterday, the developers, Mr. Pine is here because they felt it was important to talk about this to the board and let you guys know that they're actively trying to resolve this issue collectively with the town. So, but I'll leave it at that.
Okay. So board, we've approved the subdivision, the roadway. The roadway was under peer review for stormwater management, which is the requirement. So stormwater management is not required for individual lots, correct? Individual single-family lots. And then the earth removal is incidental to the approved building purpose.
Right.
So I think, are we going to call a vote, or?
We're just looking for proof that the modeling in the stormwater calculations accounted for proposed roofing and driveways and such, because that's supposed to be added to it. We just need our experts to be able to prove that to us, and that's the whole reason for this, this conversation. So.
Through the chair.
Yeah.
The stormwater design on the site, not on structure and everything else, correct?
With all due respect, this was a recommendation that came from town council.
We understand.
Do we have a letter there?
The cease and desist was written by town council.
But it's not a recharge area. I mean, it's not required recharge on roofs, right? This is stormwater, different.
With all due respect, through the chair, I think we're just here today to listen to what Mr. Pine has to say, and then.
Well, I think that we don't have evidence because it says may or may not impact. So the town's position does not really have evidence to say that there is an impact, and there's no bylaw or regulation that's being violated. So what would the purpose of the cease and desist be if, let's just say, it is affecting the stormwater modeling? So we would require the applicant on that certain lot to have infiltration? And it's a sand pit?
It's likely going to include all four lots.
Okay, so all four lots. So once we hear back from our engineer, we could, we could vote as a board to require the applicant, the owner, to have infiltration and stormwater management on those individual lots.
In theory, yeah.
Through, through the chair, I just don't understand that if it's a may or may not, and it's not definitive, how can someone put a cease and desist on a viable business? And, I mean, it just seems, it just, you know, there might be black flies. There aren't black flies. We don't know. Or whatever it is, you know, it just, you can't stop and cease and desist on something we're not sure about. It just doesn't seem right. Go ahead.
Through the chair, that's kind of why we do this. We need them to give us that information. So in the meantime, it's either the entire hill comes down and we find out later, or we stop it now, get the information, and then let them proceed. That's what we're doing.
The, I want to go back because it was brought up.
Because once.
I said this on day one, way back in the beginning of this project, that once you own the lot, you can pretty much, if you want to build a house, you can dig it to build a house. I mean, it's, it's what you're allowed to do. Stormwater and everything was designed on the road and everything else and the whole nine yards, not your individual lots. We've never, on any other project, ever had it where somebody goes to build a house and all of a sudden it's a violation. You know? All of a sudden, it's a violation on, you can't build it, even though the road's already been approved, stormwater basins have been put in, and the whole nine yards. And that's why you're saying town council.
This was put in our lap to determine if the stormwater drainage infrastructure. So they have provided through their engineer that originally engineered the project that this will not negatively impact the work. So you said they had to provide that information, so they provided it to the board.
And we're just threading it through a consultant.
Right. So I don't think that we should continue to, you know, not permit them to work on the property if we were unsure. If they, if their engineer, you know, there's some professional requirements to say what is real. I think that, and then July 18th, they come back and our consultant says, okay, so you need mitigation on those four lots. I think conditionally, maybe we can hear from the applicant if that would be agreeable, if it comes back as their engineer is not accurate or correct on their calculations.
At that time.
So all we're here is to collect information. It's, it's not to make a determination right now or to lift cease and desist or anything like that, because this was.
I think this is actually saying that we have the power, for some reason.
To lift it.
To lift it.
Right.
Okay.
Please resolve this matter with the planning board so I could call a vote.
Right.
Right.
Do it.
By.
I mean, I mean.
I don't really.
Okay, let me try it this way.
Matt, tell us what you think.
Let me try it this way. Without representation, legal representation of our own town council to address this, I don't think you should do anything until town council advises this.
Why were they not invited to this?
They were unable to attend this evening.
Well, but, excuse me, through the chair, that puts a business in peril. They can't come, then they got to wait on a cease and desist? I don't like that.
Okay.
It doesn't feel progressive at all, you know? They've done what they've got to do, and we're, you know.
Or.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's simply the planning board, so we've approved the original subdivision plan, so it's our opinion, and then it's written as an opinion, and maybe we don't have the power to lift the cease and desist, but this specifically requests the applicant from June 15th, and it's June, it's 15 days later, to resolve this matter with the planning board. So we're resolving it as, you know, the motion could be, proceed with the activities, but once we get the peer review, then there, you may be invited back. If the peer review agrees with their engineer, nothing further needs to be done. So I'm not sure we, if we could condition or put a caveat on it. I don't think we have any power to lift anything, but this letter specifically requests the planning board to resolve it, and I'm not sure how we.
And I don't see where there's a violation.
Right, and it's not even listed as any violation.
Where is the violation number?
It's a determination made by the building inspector, confirmed by town council in this letter. Okay, I understand that the board has opinions, but that's all I can say at this time.
The thing is, it's, I'm going to, through the chair, you said town council. Where is the letter from town council? This is not it. This is not.
They wrote.
No, it's not. This is not signed by town council.
Right, that's.
Where's the letter from town council that says that?
Okay. Tell you what.
So.
I've said everything that I've been told to say, and you guys can take it from there.
Okay.
Thank you.
So if I could hear from the owner, the applicant of, you know, the subdivision, to see what the process moving forward would look like.
Let me just give you a real short.
And name and address, please, for the record.
I'm James Fine, owner and manager of Sleepy Hollow subdivision. Seven weeks ago, we were contacted that there were some complaints and concern by an abotta. We worked with your town planner and the building inspector. We had several meetings to come up with some things, just to try to make peace along those lines. We voluntarily stopped, I remember, because it was the week before Easter. We said, well, we will not work for next week, and we will spray any disturbed soil to make sure there's no dust issues. So for seven weeks. And we, we had these meetings, and we'd come up with a game plan, and we would leave there feeling that the, the problem was resolved. Okay? And then a week later, something else come up that they didn't like, and then something else come up. Our problem today is, and as I say, it was a shock and a surprise to get a cease and desist. When we were working with these people, we weren't working on the site, but they chose to go this route. Our problem today is, is we have until the 16th of July to have the cease and desist resolved, or it can never be resolved, and it cannot be extended by anybody. And you don't meet again until after the 16th of July. So we really need this board to do as it says in the middle of the cease and desist, to resolve the matter, whatever you have to do, hopefully to send a letter or something to the building inspector, urging or encouraging or telling him you have no problem with the drainage issue or any other issue, and he's the only one that can remove the cease and desist.
Is, through the chair, by chance, is Ken online? Is he available?
I'll try.
In the meantime, through the chair, the letter is crafted in such a manner, and we can put up your engineer's review to support the position. He doesn't say who. He says, I am happy to consider any written documentation you wish me to review, which you believe supports the position of lifting the order. So he would consider it based on our opinion. He has to consider lifting. We can't lift it. He has to lift it. But the only documentation we have right now is your engineer, and we want to lift it, you know, but, so I guess we have to use that.
So where is the letter from your engineer? I don't, I don't think I have it in my packet.
It's not here in the bag. I don't think it made it into the bag. But it went right to the peer review consultant.
Okay.
But is it via email?
In referencing the applicant's engineer's letter dated.
I think it was the 21st. She's, she's online.
I just want to, I'm, I'm the engineer that wrote the letter.
Hi, name and address, please, for the record.
Elizabeth, my name, P for Gary, Aaron, Helen, and the, our address is 333 West Street, Milford.
Okay.
I just, I can kind of summarize, I can summarize the letter, but I actually, since I wrote the letter, I continued to do some more digging, and today was presented with one of the plans that was submitted in the, with the subdivision documents. And the drainage analysis very specifically indicates on the drainage plans that the grading of the lots was considered in the, in the drainage evaluation. So we couldn't show the, the grading per the, the final grading for the, the lots on the subdivision plans because of the way the earth removal regulations are written. However, the, all of the drainage analysis is clearly documented as being done in accordance with the final grades that were going to be in place per the, the final lot design. So there's, there is absolutely no basis whatsoever to the claim that the stormwater analysis didn't incorporate the, the grading and the, of the, of the lots. And I think it's completely unfair for the building inspector or town council, who are not capable of reading, I assume are not capable of reading drainage analysis and plans, to be issuing a document that, that. to be issuing a document that, that questions my ability or our ability to represent the stormwater, and questions your board's ability to review and approve those documents.
Through the chair, the only thing we normally do is have a peer review on those documents. It's the only thing that we normally have done, as you know.
So this...
And you did have, you did have a peer review done of the stormwater analysis of the subdivision prior to approval.
Yes.
So that, your letter is dated April 12th, 2022?
Oh, her date, the date is slightly wrong.
Oh.
It's June 21st.
I was gonna say, how did you do that? Okay, all right, that's all right.
That was a misprint.
So June 21st, 2022, so we have a letter submitted from Gary and Hallman, and that supports the evidence needed to determine that there is no impact to the subdivision approval, stormwater or drainage infrastructure. Correct?
Correct.
How come, is this village chair?
Yes.
How come we weren't privy to this information about a cease and desist before the cease and desist was ordered? I mean, it come, all this comes through the planning board. We should've, we should've had a discussion on this before the cease and desist.
Well, there was seven weeks of discussions, I'm not really sure. There were seven weeks of discussions prior.
Not with the plan, there's no, nothing in our, nothing in any of our previous meetings that had any indication that a cease and desist was gonna be ordered. I don't know why it wasn't notified that this was gonna happen before it happened, rather than all of a sudden, there's been a cease and desist, and you should've been notified for sure as the chairman, for one thing, and then the board should've had a, a time to discuss this, whether or not we think a cease and desist is in order.
I agree.
That's my feeling on it. Through the chair, how does, how does this happen? I mean, is it like, is it like a witch hunt? Is it like, somebody called somebody and somebody said something, and so pressure was on someone to bake a cease and desist? I mean, things are going according to the engineers, and all of a sudden, it comes out of blue, and all of this is like blown up. So I, I don't know, and maybe I should know, and, but in my opinion, I think it should be lifted, and we have the document, we have the opinion, and we have the engineer who actually designed this project. So I think we should, that's the supportive material we need to the chair, to recommend overturn this.
This is from the building commissioner.
Right.
This cease and desist.
Right.
Through the chair, I agree with fellow board members. The only thing I would like to see done, though, is a quick review by our peer.
It's already out.
Okay, that's what I mean.
It's already out.
And for now, let things move forward, and when we get a peer back, we'll have another meeting here, whatever it's gonna be, June 28th, 28th, whatever it is, just to make sure everything's good and to settle this all. I think in the meantime, there's already been an extensive, that plan was hammered over, as we all know, weeks and weeks and weeks and weeks by this board, by everybody on stormwater. And my understanding was, it was, the original layout had it all laid out with all the lots and everything else, had all the stormwater, we had the mailbox location made, everything's done, everything is done there. So I don't understand how this is all coming about, and that's my personal thought.
Through the chair, do we, can we handle this as a vote of confidence in, sort of to overturn this, and how do we handle it?
Mr. Benoit, well, how would you fashion the motion? This is requesting the board to resolve this matter with the planning board at your earliest convenience.
I have an idea.
Okay, I mean...
Through the chair, what I would kind of recommend is, through the planning board, our recommendation is that the project moves forward. We are having a peer review taking place at the same time, and we'll have another meeting at the end of the month of June.
And a letter was presented from the applicant's engineer on June 21st as evidence that there is no impacts, and it's out for peer review, or like that.
Yeah, so the board wants to allow the developer to continue working on the site, pending that our peer review finds that no changes are needed to the subdivision plan.
Not pending, because that means you can't do nothing till it's...
Contingent upon.
Yes.
It'll continue...
Something contrary to, sorry.
No, not contrary. Conditional, conditionally. So once we have, once we have the review back, our peer review, as long as they are in agreement with the applicant's engineer...
Correct.
No further review is needed.
Yeah. This is part of the reason why I was unsure if you wanted to have another meeting in July.
No, just do it now.
No, we're not.
Okay.
So that's all the question right there. So we need this to continue forward.
So...
Go to conference.
Let's, let's craft the motion as such that we have enough information in front of us, review from the planning board, to make a decision to allow activities to resume, contingent upon the...
Not contingent upon.
Condition...
Not even conditional, understanding that a peer review will come.
And if there are discrepancies...
Yes.
They will...
They must be resolved.
You will be at the next meeting on July 28th.
Right.
For mitigation.
But if I may, out of chair...
The important thing is to lift the, the cease and desist gets lifted.
So we, we need to...
Our recommendation, as a board, after reviewing the engineered letter, would be to allow the developer to commence or recommence activities.
Recommend through the, I mean, with all due respect to Ken, I mean, I understand, you know, he's doing, trying to do his job too, but with all due respect, through the planning board, the planning board highly recommends that the cease and desist be lifted at this time to continue work, and then, you know, we are having peer review, and we will all remeet when that peer review comes in.
So be after discussion and evidence presented by the applicant. The planning board has determined that the, there is no impact to the stormwater drainage infrastructure with the grading on any of the four lots that have cease and desist on, right?
Yeah, I mean, basically, it starts with the planning board is recommending lifting the cease and desist order.
The issue is that it says, please resolve this matter with the planning board. I just want to be clear.
Want to resolve.
It's, this ballon is in our court, so we have to be strong with the words that we choose.
Correct, but it's still his opinion. He could...
I understand that, but why put the planning board needs to resolve it?
Well, we are resolving it. After discussion, the planning board has resolved to lift...
Yeah.
The cease and desist order, just using these red words he's got here.
Yeah, had voted to lift...
On permit, blah, 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 you know, so...
Yeah, so there's four permits, right?
Right.
I mean, there's four cease and desists.
Take a shot at it, I was writing something wrong.
All right. Mr. Benoit's gonna suggest a motion.
The planning board recommends the building commissioner lift the cease and desist upon receipt of peer review, finding no necessary changes to prove stormwater system.
Say it again.
Upon, upon the peer review, no, we want it...
Oh, not upon the peer review.
We want it, if the peer review has...
A negative impact...
Different, yes.
Then there will be review.
Determines that there's a, that there is an impact, the applicant shall come back to the board for mitigation measures.
Yes.
Right, that's fine.
That's our argument. Through the chair, I mean, that's, so, we're off a peer.
I think what, I think what you guys want to say is that at this point in time, there isn't any evidence, there isn't significant, significant evidence, or I can't think of the exact word, to show that there is a issue with the stormwater, and until such evidence is produced likely by, if by anybody, by the peer reviewer, then you reconsider the matter. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it's too long, though.
I'm sorry.
It's too long.
Which is upon evidence produced at this meeting through the engineer, we, the planning board hereby recommends that the...
Resolve the matter.
Resolve, we've resolved this to lift the order of the cease and desist. That's it, period, until some other further something.
Yeah, due to lack of evidence or drainage concerns.
Not lack of evidence, until something says something else.
I think we condition with the response from our peer review, since it is already sent out, and there is a checks and balance here. So I think we have to have the caveat of, if the peer review determines that there is a negative impact...
Yes.
Then the applicant will be back for mitigation measures.
Yes.
Fine.
Back in front of the board.
Must perform mitigation matters.
Must, must perform.
Must perform, because earth removal...
But we want to approve those. We want to...
Yes.
And I'm sure if the mitigation measures are required, the peer review will probably suggest them, too.
Yes.
Chairman, just keep in mind, not that this matters the legal of it, but we voluntarily stopped for a week and allowed seven weeks...
Yeah, we under...
Why, so if we have to pause because the review shows that we need to deal with something, you know we will.
Right, we will, it, outside of this meeting, I think that could be resolved.
Right. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Benoit.
Trying to craft the motion.
It's a little tricky. It's a little tricky motion. Never been done before.
Should've never come to this in the first place.
It's here, it's now.
It happens.
So, Madam Chair, the planning board recommends to the building commissioner lift the cease and desist, period, if peer review determines...
No.
Yep, wait, let it...
If peer review determines negative impact, the applicant shall appear before the board, propose necessary improvements.
But we need to mention only one thing, that we have evidence. He says here that you need...
I don't think that's good, yeah.
Well, that's that letter, and that's the engineer.
Well, I think the commentary that we've discussed, the commentary has been discussed, and I think that's short and sweet. The planning board has voted to resolve the matter and to allow the building inspector to lift the cease and desist, I guess. There's weird wording in here, please resolve this matter with the planning board. So the matter has been resolved with the planning board through vote with the caveat.
Just want to read it in one sentence.
I know.
That's all I want to do. We are recommending that building commissioner lifts the cease and desist, is that correct?
We, I think we need to say that the planning board has resolved this matter...
Find...
And find evidence of no impact to stormwater drainage infrastructure. And then, I like your second sentence.
Okay, so that, combined with peer review determines negative impact, the applicant shall appear...
Mm-hmm.
Shall meet with the board at a future meeting to propose necessary improvements.
Mm-hmm.
So you're looking for a so moved to that.
Mm-hmm.
Is it clear that we're lifting it, we're lifting it tonight, though?
No, we recommend it, and Ken has to remove it.
We're just stating that we've resolved it through the planning board. That's all we...
Yep.
Well...
I, the only thing through the chair that I see in the, because I write specs on evidence and this stuff, he's asking us, I will consider it if you have and believe that there is documentation supporting the position, which is this letter. So I think we should reference...
That's to the Sleepy Hollow people, though.
I understand, but we're not to the peer review yet. That's the only evidence we have. If we don't present...
Is the engineered letter dated June 21st, 2022?
Something, and she came...
The board has, yeah, I mean, the commentary, I think, can support that. I think we need to be short and sweet.
I think the way you have it written right now, yeah...
I think Ken could come back and say, hey, you did it, but with some evidence, you didn't...
I think he has the evidence.
Somehow he...
We have, we have the original print.
So let's have Mr. Benoit read the drafted...
So let's see how you go.
Oh, goodness. You hit, you hit that first sentence so well, I didn't write that one down.
Remember it?
The board has determined, has resolved, the board has resolved the matter...
Yes. To...
And determined...
To, determined to lift the cease and desist.
The alterations will not impact stormwater drainage and infrastructure.
That's right.
And if the peer review determines negative impact, the developer shall meet with the board at a future meeting to propose necessary improvements.
We don't need immediately lift the cease and desist?
No. I hear, so moved.
Whatever. Does that sound right? Does that work for you?
Well, that's my question. From a standpoint of timing, if the building inspector, he's gonna get this letter on Tuesday?
We'll probably have a peer review by Tuesday also.
Pardon?
Through the chair, we'll probably have the peer review back by Tuesday or Wednesday at the latest.
But I mean, it's imperative that, that this get lifted, otherwise, we have to start to go before the Board of Appeals, and my attorney said, that's a very difficult...
Why is that?
Oh, because the thirty day...
Of the thirty days.
We don't, that's why it's Ken, will you hold a Ken?
No. Through the chair?
Yes.
I believe that this is a planning board issue, and I haven't seen any documentation that indicates otherwise, that the building inspector should have issued a cease and desist in the first place. And it's, we are the controlling board for subdivisions and stormwater management in those subdivisions. It's strictly, I think, in our court, and it's our decision to tell him to lift the cease and desist, not ask him to. It's our, it's ours, it's our boy.
It's our jurisdiction, this project.
It's our jurisdiction.
But he is the person in charge of enforcement.
He hasn't presented me any engineering or any evidence at all why he issued it in the first place.
Right, well, that's the person I asked, through the chair.
Why, why did it...
That's the person I asked for. Where's the proof? What, what article number, what page?
Where's the information telling me that, that the drainage is not accurate?
Yes.
Sorry. So subdivision process, lots are released, now they're under a building permit. That's why they're under the building commissioner's jurisdiction at this time.
Right, but what he's saying is, excuse me, through the chair... So if they're still in the building, that's fine. He says if you find I'm inaccurate in my finding... But I don't see, or I don't see any findings.
So...
It says it, yeah.
Okay, so I think if we could notify the building inspector of our decision, hopefully he can have a verbal lift of that until at least the peer review.
I anticipate this being resolved next week, one way or the other.
Okay.
But we still need to put us on record that we're supporting the lift.
Well, it's gonna be, yeah.
Because it is our jurisdiction.
No.
To a point, building inspector.
No, we're not worried about it.
Okay. The excavation is incidental to the approved building purpose, which is the building permits, which he does have jurisdiction over. So he has enforcement powers over that.
Yes.
Something triggered all this. If we have evidence...
Yes, through the chair, yes, complaints from neighbors that triggered all of this.
Right, but I'm founded particularly because it's not engineering that has, you know... A complaint from a, from a neighbor should be taken up, I agree.
Yes, absolutely.
Taken up at this board at a meeting, I agree. I, I... It has to be, it has to be a really big issue that's destroying somebody else's property or doing damage to somebody else's property to actually put a cease and desist on a project.
Sure.
It doesn't make sense to me that this ever happened to begin with.
So my thought process on this through the chair is that at some point in the future when this development is finished, the stormwater system and the roadway is gonna be accepted by the town. All we want to check is to make sure that what's happening with its over 200,000 cubic yards of fill on a hill that's coming out on incidental to building purposes, it's a ton of earth, okay? We just want to make sure that the modeling for the original stormwater still remains consistent and all as is, and we just need an engineer to tell us that. That's all we're doing.
But that should've been done at the meeting here at the planning board before a cease and desist.
a cease and desist was issued.
Yes.
That should have been resolved, the cease and desist, if that's the reason that a cease and desist should never have been issued in the first place without first having that discussion here at this board.
So, so here we are.
Here we are. So I think what I'm hearing as a, by consensus, we would like this lifted tomorrow, so they can resume activity, not just once we get the peer review letter.
Right.
That's the board's wish.
Yep, that's my wish, I want to lift it now. I don't see a reason for it to be that it was put in place to begin with.
So if I could have Mr. Benoit read the drafted motion and a so moved, and we can move on, and I think that he's very aware of our opinions on this, and he's going to make everything as much as possible, make it happen as quickly as possible.
All right, I'll take a shot. Planning board finds that the matter is resolved, and that the building commissioner should lift the cease and desist effective immediately.
Correct.
Yes.
Immediately.
Until another peer review determines otherwise.
Okay. I'm going to read this as-
Period right there.
Period.
If the peer review determines negative impact to the stormwater system, the applicant shall appear before the board at its next available meeting to propose necessary improvements.
So moved.
Which made by Mr. Swick, or seconded by Mr. Sokrat. Before I call, Ms. Schlesman, do you have any questions on this?
No, I think I'm actually going to abstain on this vote, because I think it, it's predicated upon prior knowledge of this subdivision, and I just, even though this is recent, I just don't feel like I'm in a place where I can vote on it.
Okay, okay. All right, all those in favor, roll call.
Erin Sokrat, aye.
Ernie Mox, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Sokar, aye.
Ms. Schlesman abstaining.
Okay, thank you very much. Good luck.
I'm going to do it before I leave here tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Then we're going to skip pre-organization.
Enjoy the floor, you guys.
Modifications to 2022 meeting schedule, there was some discussion on the second July, is that, was that the only one that you-
Yeah, it seems that the, Madam Chair, that no one wants to have another meeting in July.
Okay, this was a bonus meeting also, so, and then property boundaries, preservation park update.
Sure, that project was completed last week, so we're getting ready to move on to the next one, so. There were a couple of troublesome bounds that they've identified that might be issues when we have to, the way he described it was, one of them was right where a utility box is, so, and another one was right in between a guardrail and two giant pieces of ledge, so a couple of them were pretty difficult to place, so one of them was placed with a pin instead of a bong.
Yeah.
We got a discount on that?
Good question, actually. I'll have him apply it to the next job.
Yeah.
So there's still more bounds, there were twenty-eight total, we only got priced up at twenty-two, so still a half dozen more to do, and still be starting, at least, we have to put it out for a bid every time, so we'll start doing that as soon as the fiscal year rolls over, just tomorrow, so.
Great.
Okay. And then we can do meeting minutes Thursday, March 24th, this is your packet?
Madam Chair, I did have a chance to review them, 24th, the 14th, and the 28th. I have minor changes to the 28th.
Okay. Board, did we look at March 24th?
Mr. Mike. That was clean, I think, March 24th.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes for Thursday, March 24th, 2022.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Greco.
I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Erin Sokrat, aye.
Ernie Mox, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Sokar, aye.
Ms. Schlesman abstaining.
Okay, thank you. April 14th.
I didn't see anything, did you? Same. I'll make a motion.
Make a motion?
So moved.
Wait, one second.
Second.
So Mr. Greco was in the middle of-
Oh, please.
I was going to say, I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for April 14th, 2022.
Motion made by Mr. Greco, seconded by Mr. Sokrat, all those in favor?
Erin Sokrat, aye.
Ernie Mox, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Sokar, aye.
Ms. Schlesman abstaining.
Ms. Schlesman abstaining.
Okay, thank you, happy season, board.
That's your name?